Okay, it's August 5th, 2019. We're gonna call this meeting to order. Roll call, Smiley here. Hamel, Sick, Murphy's here. Approval of the minutes of the last meeting, July 29th, 2019, which I wasn't here, so John, does that look all right to you?
Yeah, it looks good to me.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All in favor of this?
Oh, alright.
One vote is. There you bid.
Thank you.
Okay, number five. Approve this through monthly reports for the following. Assistant Office County Clerk, Court Clerk, Health Department, Treasury Office, elect.
I've got all of this.
All of those. I'll make the motion to approve whatever we want.
Not all?
Oh, but the Sheriff's Office looks like it's on there.
Right.
I'm second.
Favor.
Alright.
She already was on the way. How far is this?
Number six. Discussion Possible Action Regarding Monthly Appropriations. I'll make the motion to approve those. What's that? Motion carries.
Up, down, all around, about the same?
Looks like it up.
Seventy-six?
That one, he had some extra.
I think he had some.
Yeah, so I think it's day one.
No, I'm...
Oh.
That's CBRI, sorry. See, that one's up. I mean, 'cause you had extra.
Well, let's see.
The next one is...
Hundred fifty-six.
Sure. About north of...
Yeah, I thought it was down to a hundred and twenty something, last month.
Oh, maybe it was. Oh, okay, so it means seventy-six.
It hit down to about one eighteen or something. Yeah.
Lowest it's ever been.
I couldn't remember if that was last month, but it's been...
It was the month before, one of them two.
And it's like the... The CBRI is old and steady, if not up a little, thirteen.
I'll spend over Nicklaus.
Thirteen-three. So...
Yeah.
I can remember that being an eight or nine, so...
Two, three thousand.
Randy, do you want them to stay?
Do what?
You want them to stay?
You don't need to. I mean, we're just gonna do it and new business and approve it.
That's right.
Thank you.
That's your work, young man?
Yeah.
He shakes the whole table?
No permits or anything like that?
Uh-uh.
I saw a sign the other day with a ringed... I can't...
Well, I got a rig moved in, but no permission.
Well, I can't remember where it was, but...
Turned off north of Winoka.
Does sign offer fourteen?
Well, that's... That's where that rig is at now. It comes from about ten years somewhere.
Well, I mean, I was down fourteen, I guess, is when I saw it.
Is there JR's road?
Okay.
Right across the road from JR.
Yeah.
Where's that?
Yeah, I guess that's where it was. I was thinking that most of them have been on down south and east of there.
They drilled a sand ridge. I don't know whether they're in with sand ridge or what, but the stake had muck on it. But then they come in and built the location, and now there's some sand rids. Old, used sand ridge stakes that they're building the heat or treaters, like they're using used stuff.
Well, we're bought a sand ridge. A week or so ago. No, I mean, it came out.
Well, then that's why.
They bought it back?
Yeah. Or... Or this area of it.
Really?
Kinda like he did Chesapeake.
Yep.
I think. I don't know the particulars, but in this area, yeah, he's back in the offices out there now.
Okay.
Or gonna be.
Well, he said at the mineral ownership meeting, he was gonna... They, his company, Muck, was going to try and secure all of the Mississippi line this quarter. How close my Kansas?
Yeah. That's my understanding, is what he did is... Is up here.
Okay.
But that was just hearsay from employees, so I mean, I haven't seen any publication of it yet. Alright, number seven. Discussion Possible Action Regarding Chipman Seal Bid 1920-01. This is essentially a rebid, and it was due to technical issues that some vendors didn't get notified of the bill... Or being able to bid.
That's three.
What's this for again?
Chipman Sealing. It's a service that we had on the six-month bid. Labor, and we've got one lead... One deal, and come find out there was emails didn't go through or whatever, not everybody got notified. So...
You sprayed labor?
Yeah, they'll spray that oil on the road, and then they drill that rock on there.
We buy the rock and oil.
We buy the oil and the rock, and then they do the labor.
But you'll go past, everything's...
These is about a mile. About a mile.
Sheriff's office.
About an hour, we'll find out.
We've got one from Vance Brothers, and they are eight thousand, one fifty-two, thirty-two.
Eight thousand?
One fifty-two, thirty-two.
Is that per mile?
Yes, per lane or mile.
Is that a lane mile or both sides, down the back? What's it say?
No, that's just a lane or mile.
A lane or mile, how wide?
I'd say.
I think I talked to him at one mark, one twenty-three.
Yeah.
It is three thousand, one seventy-five.
Per mile?
And we got one north on B&amp;H. And B&amp;H is thirty-nine-hundred. You know, how was it?
Hi. I don't know if they need to look at them unless they're sunk, but they're all good bids.
They're all good bids.
Bids. Bids are circle C. Low bidder is here. I'm gonna ask, not only ask, is... When do you think timeframe?
Be October. Going into October, so...
First part of October?
We're gonna try our hardest.
Dubai?
Yeah, we're gonna try our...
Okay.
Try and be good.
But that's your... Your guesstima?
Right, yes.
Okay. Okay. John, what do you think? I'm gonna... I'm gonna...
I'm out.
I'm gonna go with low bidder. I mean, that's what I think.
Well, I don't need him. I mean, I got... That's why I bought that...
Right, right.
And Davidson, whatever, you guys decide.
So, I mean, whatever you wanna do, whatever we'll do.
Well, I'm gonna go with low bid. I do want to put in the minutes, and here, I want you to hear this. If you get behind, and it's gonna be later than that, I may wanna go to the next bidder. You know, if it looks like we're gonna get into a weather issue for both... Both parties concerned.
Okay.
I mean, is that fair enough? Because, I mean, if it gets later on down there, you see that it's gonna be the end of October, we're probably out, period.
I've seen...
You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah. Going off that fifty degrees, you and I kind of talking about it earlier, it was...
Yeah.
Unless like monsoon, like it was last October, where it rained for three weeks.
Well, I mean, we... None of us can predict it, but we get to that point.
That's just giving you an option.
Yeah. Yeah. But I want... I want that everybody to be clear at that point, you know, on that deal. I mean, and what I told him, John, is the fifty degrees, if it looks like, you know, that's a no-go. Fifty degrees before or after, and...
Falling.
That's kind of the...
Need to be fifty and rising.
Yeah.
Fifteen and falling. He's headed to the city.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Alright.
I'm gonna show him through it afterwards.
He's headed that way.
Okay. No. Oh.
Do you need this one?
Oh, I can need Simon.
Oh, okay.
Do we need to move down to the left?
Hey, come on, I'll reach your hand.
Did I help you?
Sure. Done a nice job, that'd be good.
Okay, we're gonna skip down to twelve now. Discussion Possible Action Regarding Hire, Census Contact Person. Who bids her for your case? Steph's case deal here, and the gentleman boy over here.
Ethan, come on over.
Number twelve. Discussion Possible Action Regarding Hiring, Hiring of a Census Contact Person. And if your name's Ethan?
Yes.
Hi, Ethan, I'm Randy.
Nice to meet you.
Ethan Sackett. He's a Northwestern student, junior. Junior. And anyway, we had talked at the Woods County Economic Development Committee meeting about the need to have someone working with the Census Bureau and Department of Commerce to kind of facilitate the process for gearing up for the census. And so, we looked into, you know, what kind of hours it would take anyway. Ethan is already kind of on the job. He's met with the... When did you meet with the Census Bureau lady who was here in Alva? Prisha?
Prisha, yes.
She's out of Palm City, but actually, her office is in Dallas. She's with the Census Bureau out of Dallas, and that was...
July fifteenth.
And so, he went ahead on his own accord, and went down and introduced himself and kind of made some initial connections. But Ethan's primary role will be making sure that Woods County and all of the communities within Woods County are working together with Department of Commerce and the Census Bureau to ensure that every county is asked to formulate a complete count committee to make sure that hard-to-reach populations or previously unknown addresses, like if there's been new housing construction done over the past ten years, that those are identified, and that populations that might be less inclined to participate are fully informed about the need to participate. So that's basically the process this fall. And then census kicks off in January, April, something is...
April first is when the census...
Okay, April first is the actual...
When they start counting?
Yes.
And so, he'll be working with others in, you know, the state, and then identifying whether it's municipal government, county government, the schools, university, making sure that, you know, everything is set up and ready to go. And so, if you all have a person here in the courthouse that you would like him to, you know, work with, he needs to know who that person is. And he will be checking in to the Freedom List Office once a week, giving me a summary update of things done, what his plans are, and if we've already met, we met last...
Yes.
August first, to kind of go over what his job description and duties would be. He does have timesheets and mileage forms and all of that. And so, anyway, any questions about...
When...
Go ahead, Randy. Well, I was just... All I'm curious about is, we talked about this the school year, the two semesters, right?
Yes, yes.
Well, it sounds like that's gonna... April's gonna... When the count starts, that's gonna run into next summer? Are you... What? I mean, I'm not opposed, I'm just...
If we needed to go to July one?
Or to whatever we need to, yes, I mean...
But I think the majority of the work that he needs to do will be done by me.
Okay. Alright, okay.
Will you start in Alva, and then like with Winoka? I mean, is there any way we can get scheduled so, hey, people, gonna be a fella around counting heads? Kind of give people, you know, when our area is heads up, or...
Yeah, and that was the ideal goal with the Complete Count Committee, is to have a representative from each city, so Winoka, Freedom, Tacoma, and Alva, and keep them informed on the schedule of... Ultimately push out the census.
Well, what I've read about, you're supposed to have a committee?
Yes.
Is that who the... Who this committee's gonna consist of?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's what he's, I think, is about your first step, is to start setting up that committee, right?
And I've given him... I've given him Susan Bradford's name for Winoka, Darren Slater for Tacoma, Shad Bracken for Freedom. So he'll reach out to the city offices and kind of, you know, work with them to get things done. And then we need somebody from here in the courthouse. And then he's also got Caleb Mossberg in Dr. Haniford at the university, and then I'm asking to go visit with the school superintendents in Alva, Winoka, and Freedom to, you know, a lot of times your schools know where people are that they might not know otherwise. So that's another component of the committee. But the main thing we need to make sure is that, and he knows how critical it is to county government, schools, cities, to get an accurate count. For our area of the state, everybody matters. And so, we definitely need to make sure.
That's something the media could...
Yeah.
Help us with, you know, hey, this guy's gonna be coming around?
Yes.
Well, it's important in several aspects. I mean, from Grant, for stuff for Woods County, but also...
It's what makes the work around.
I talked to Newton the other night, too. They're gonna redistribute representatives in areas and stuff by the... The census will have a part in.
Right.
It'll definitely impact this back here.
So, well, I mean, I don't know if now's the time to talk about our representative, but... Any suggestion? I don't know either.
Shelley, do you have a person in your office that you... You know, it probably needs to be... It doesn't matter this, but one person here at the courthouse who could, you know, easily disseminate information to each office in the courthouse to make sure that if there is...
How about we do Amy?
Okay.
That'd be fine.
Okay.
That girl right there sounds like the best one.
Yeah. So you can get, and you're Amy.
Yes.
So Amy too can get your connections there. And Randy, I gave him your cell phone number also, so if there's anything that he needs directly with, you know, a commissioner. But anyway, he's... I've worked with Ethan for the last year, and...
Good luck.
He's an outstanding young man.
You're gonna run across some stuff, you can blow your mind.
Yeah.
But just smile.
Yes, sir.
He's a good, good guy, and I have absolute confidence in him.
Well, I'm gonna make the motion, we hire him, and we pay him, and that is the agreement's ten bucks an hour plus mileage, the governmental rate? Right?
Yes.
Okay.
And we'll just, probably just gonna put him right on our payroll, or is it...
That's how you wanted it?
How we have him?
Well, whatever works for you guys, you just tell me. 'Cause I've given him my timesheet that we use, I've given him my mileage phone that we use, and...
And you can just turn that into it if you want, and that way we can handle the taxes, or however you wanna do it.
Okay, sure.
Whatever's easiest for you.
You guys do...
Since we already do it.
Gives you time to figure out what you want.
We do do just monthly.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Shelley and I'll figure that out.
Yeah, okay. That's...
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, very good. Appreciate you guys. My cousin's in Portland, and...
Motion carries.
Impacts us for the next ten years, so...
You make the motion.
Yeah. I do love what I say.
Nice to meet you.
And if you guys, as you're out and about, if you become aware of, you know, a household or something that maybe is not on the radar, let us know.
Well, there is a beauty of being here, and that's what I was trying to think with the 911 being there.
Yes.
You're ready to see.
Yes.
As Amy has access to those, or gets you in there and there, that could be helpful. It is the best help I know.
Sure. Okay, alright. Ethan?
And we could go through or voter and mark the people that's deceased.
Deceased.
That'd help, you know. There's lots of people that still own a home, that's died, that you ain't gonna get ahold of nobody, you know, on that door, till, you know, but they might show up on the weekend or something.
Exactly.
They don't...
Yeah, it's those, you know, absentee...
It's still be tricky, but people do that.
Now, if I remember right, last time in ten, the prison down here was... We could use that as optional?
They do it for Bill Johnson, or not Bill Johnson, over Crabtree, they count them.
Okay.
So Bill Johnson...
Well, I guess that auction deal was to the commissioners on the... On the population of our district. See, we're separated by population. And we could use them, or we didn't have to.
I'm just gonna tell you this, and I'm gonna couch this in the best way possible. When I do demographic analysis for the university, and Alfa County is one of our service area counties, their minority population makeup is always very different from any of the other counties in northwest Oklahoma, because they count Crabtree population. And so, for example, in their American Indian and African-American populations, they are significantly higher than Woods County. And it's not because they have a large population.
It's all 'cause of prison.
It's because of the prison. And so, I'm gonna recommend that this entity be counted.
Okay. Well, I didn't know since I... After I started talking about that, I think it was an auction that was given to the commissioners about our redistricting.
Sure.
Whether we counted them as population, 'cause they were all under one umbrella out there, one place.
Right.
And, see, we have to be within a five percent differential between the three districts. Has to be within five percent.
At any given point in time, that population's gonna be about five hundred to seven hundred, depending on, you know, intakes and whatnot. But I would say it would help you in a lot of different ways.
You just have to look at everything that we got.
Absolutely, yeah.
And go from there.
And you know, the Sand Dunes whole situation with people owning homes and whatnot down there can get tricky, too.
Yeah, well, and be a... How can they be a resident there and one in Wichita?
And if they're half and half, then what?
Yeah.
So, it is something that we probably need to look at hard. And you probably gonna get some guidance from the census folks on how to do that. But if you have questions about any of those, I suppose, here's the man to talk to, Mr. Smiley, that's his district.
Oh, you want my phone number, or I just say?
That'd be, that'd be good.
It's, uh... My name's John Smiley.
Okay.
It's five eight oh, three three four, sixty-five, fifty-three.
Sixty-five?
Six-five, five-three. Better or not, don't matter.
Oh, you need to call in at three AM.
Okay. I'll be getting ready to go to bed, but...
Okay, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
For that, it's taken.
Thank you.
Catch my card if you guys have any information, just if you need to contact me.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thanks, sir.
Okay, see y'all.
Better leave one there for Amy if you don't already.
I'm just leaving it out here for contact, yeah. Thank you again.
Okay, now we'll go back up to number eight. Discussion Possible Action Regarding the Transfer Funds Arrow Correction, eighteen dollars that should have been deposited in General Government Fund, not emergency money.
Yes. This money was deposited in our account, so we're just cleaning up, I've got two of them.
I'll make motion that that happens.
I'll second. Is that just seven, we're done?
Eight.
Or we do?
We just did eight.
Oh.
Seven, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Did eight, and did twelve. So, number nine. Discussion Possible Action Regarding the Transfer Funds Arrow Correction of twenty-one hundred and sixty-five dollars that should have been deposited in General Government Fund, not emergency money.
That's the second one.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll second. Number ten. Discussion Possible Action Regarding the Sheriff's Radio to be junk, ID number B six oh one dash fifty-three. I'll make motion that...
The...
He jumps.
And they're gonna throw up the trash.
Yeah. I'll second. Motion carries. That's that kid's card. Then you are the contact person if you weren't in on that.
I heard.
Number eleven. Discussion Possible Action Regarding Woods County Financial Report.
And this is the report David prepares each year, and...
In the past, I don't... Have we approved these in the past? I don't remember seeing these in the past. Nothing mattered.
We did two years ago, but we didn't last year. But I don't know what we had ever done before that.
I don't remember it, because I... I don't remember it, because I, it, it came up on some of our lease purchase stuff. I'll make the motion, we approve this.
What's it for?
It's just a financial report. It's a...
That David, the treasurer checks out?
It's every year.
Proving it?
Yes.
For what?
Well, what, where I found that I didn't, I found out it existed is, is these banks sometimes, like, I have to give a financial report to my bank for lending purposes and stuff, and I didn't know this existed, but some banks have got to where they request this, but, and come to find out, it's been there every year, David does it, so I guess we're just, we're just making it more proper.
Yeah.
So, I'll make the motion, we approve it. I mean, I don't, I wouldn't know how to change it, John. I mean, that's his job, but it's just one...
And it's same spectrum.
Sounds to me like.
Right.
Have them to get, 'cause I, before, what I'd have to do for the banks is I'd have to print them off our entire budget.
Yeah.
And this way it seems...
And this way, uh, it's easier.
See, I mean, the auditors have just requested that to the banks when we, we use the lease purch... Well, it used to, for one thing, they didn't use a whole lot of local banks like we've been using, uh, lately. It's went through the machinery outfits and, uh, like Warren Cat, Yellow House, and those kind of things, evidently, they didn't need it, they knew what they were up with, and their auditors are different. I'm sure this is for the auditors, when they request those, that financial statement for the lease purchase stuff.
That's good, Luke.
Number thirteen. New business, and as I said, uh, we're gonna renew that, which I don't think it needs to be action. I think it should be one of those agreements that we've, that should have been in July.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
That...
For the Jehovah Witness.
Yes. Uh, for their deal. The other thing I wanna mention, and I, and, and it's, yeah, it's with a lot of sadness, that the forty-four-year-old dispatcher that passed away last week, yeah, just, we, her parents are with her family, her kids, what have you, and, uh, I mean, I think it needs to be noted that she was an employee here.
Super good.
Yeah.
And are we gonna close?
Uh, yeah, I think that we oughta close from noon to three.
Noon to three.
Uh, what do you think? General's at two, but there's gonna be several, and I'm supposed to be there at twelve forty-five for, uh, perception or, or some kind of deal, so, uh, I think that's, and that's tomorrow. I know it's gonna short notice, but...
I think that's good, in all respects.
Yeah. Number fourteen, or is there, you got anything else, John?
No.
You got anything for it?
No, sir.
Fourteen approved this through my purchase order.
So, move.
Second. I don't wanna need to sign, oh, no. I don't need to do it both, do I? I already started this one.
Only if it's your...
Well, down there.
Oh, it does say chair.
Are you, that one, one of these?
That's Lisa.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
See, there's a place down there for the chairman to sign, and that's why I was wondering.
I'm just signing right here.
Well, I think, I think that's all I need to do too, that I've signed two here.
You approve them, right? You approve them?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah. He made the motion. Yes, nice second. Number fourteen's a motion to adjourn. I'll make that motion. Motion carries.
Good thing.